3:00 PM, have the call to order invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin. Pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Dunn Williams, please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we pray for each person that came to the city council meeting today. We pray, Lord, for those in our community who are sick or hurting. And, Lord, we just pray for protection for our military and for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve minutes of May 1st, 2018.
Summat.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your vote.
Counsel, we have one add-on today. It will be number 12 under new business, introducing ordinance, amending ordinance number 95 of 2017, first reading.
Ms. Free, thank you. We have a second.
A second.
Our motion is second, please cast your vote. Anyone object to adding item number 12? Please cast your vote, counsel. Now we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Counsel, please cast your vote. Today we have, under ceremonial matters, recognition of guests, we have the Honorable Mayor Tyler here, so you are a special guest. We appreciate you all being here. And we have Mr. Walker have a special presentation. And Ms. Tyler.
Counsel, a guest every once in a while, somebody in the community does such work that's outstanding and above the norm. He's the kind of person that you tell your kids, "I want your kids to be like him," and they put the kids on their shoulders that when he walks by in a parade, they want to see this guy. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today, but we did have Rick Rowe. So, Rick, if he would step forward. Mayor Tyler and I have a few things to say, and Mayor Tyler, if you would...
Susan, if y'all want to come up in front right here, y'all come out here.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
I'm here supposed to be working, my goodness alive.
Working, absolutely, absolutely. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Susan.
To the President and the members of the Boja City Council. I want to thank you all for having me here this afternoon, and I want to thank my good friend and colleague, the Honorable Mayor Low Walker, for being here with us, for having me here with him today. I'm so glad that I am able to share in this tribute to the man who takes pleasure in highlighting the good in our community, our local TV personality, Mr. Rick Rowe. And I've got to tell you something before we get to the joint proclamation. Mr. Rowe was working before the council meeting got started, and he was just talking about others, as he normally does. But that's the kind of man that he is. And so I'm just so honored to be here this afternoon to pay tribute to this wonderful man. I want to thank you, Mr. Rowe, for your contribution to our community. You've been instrumental in sharing the beauty of life in our region, and for that we are so very grateful. You stayed home and have served your community well. We thank God for you. We commend you on more than four decades of service with KTBS. Your work and efforts are greatly appreciated. At this time, Mayor Walker is going to come, and we will do a joint proclamation together.
We're going to do a bunch of whereas, so if you will bear with us.
If y'all want to come down front, y'all can come down front.
Say what?
If they want it to come down front in video, they can come down front.
Yeah, feel free to take pictures.
You can get in the front if you want to.
Be very valuable someday. Proclamation, whereas there are a few people in the Arctic Tech more familiar to our citizens than Rick Rowe. Rick was born at an early age. No, that's not it. Rick was born and raised in Boja City. He attended LSU Shreveport majoring in journalism. Rick has been a member of the KTBS TV3 news team since 1976. In two days, it will be 43 years.
Goodness gracious.
He studied journalism at LSU Shreveport, but it is while working at KTBS that his storytelling and photojournalism talents were realized. And whereas, Rick is married to Donna, and they have two children, Bailey and Chrissy. He is known as a man of faith, family man, and a lawyer friend. He's an exercise enthusiast. You can find him working out at the Adrenaline Fitness in Boja City at least six days a week.
Well.
Kind of lost my place. Rick also likes to photograph all types of wildlife, but he only shoots them with his camera lens. And whereas Rick has a passion for people, he never meets a stranger, and he believes the majority of mankind is good. Telling the stories of those around him has become his trademark and is a direct reflection of his passion. His positive, heartwarming stories upon us of all the good in mankind encourages each of us to pause and to take a second look at those we pass by every day. And whereas...
Thank you. And whereas, a few of the highlights of Rick's 43-year career are, he was nominated for a Directors Guild Award in 1986 for the documentary, "The China Experience," and was recipient of the Gabriel Award in 1994 for "Home for Angels," a feature story about Shreveport's Holy Angels Residential Home. Recently, he received several Associated Press Awards, including first place for Franchise Reporting, Stories from the Heart, second place for Long Light Feature, Rob Reeves Navy SEAL, and second place for Short Light Feature, Scopina Memoir of Home. He is extremely honored and grateful to have received the many nominations from our local community as their favorite TV reporter, including a recent SB Magazine Award. And whereas, in 2018, Rick won two Louisiana Association of Broadcasters Prestige Awards. He earned Photo Journalist of the Year honors, as well as Best Series or Documentary for his coverage of the American Veterans Traveling Tribute, "The Vietnam War Memorial," that was brought to Boja City in 2017. And whereas, if Rick could tell everyone one thing about himself, it would be, "I love what I do, and I will never stop telling your stories." Now therefore, we, Alias Tyler, Mayor of the City of Shreveport, and Lorenz Low Walker, Mayor of the City of Boja City, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 15th, as 2018, as Rick Rowe Day, in the cities of Shreveport and Boja City, Louisiana, and ask all citizens to join us in offering Rick congratulations and a heartfelt thanks for using his talents and insight to tell the inspirational stories of those around us. Rick, our lives are richer because of you. And witness whereof, we have herein to set our hands and cause the seals of the cities of Shreveport and Boja City to be affixed. God bless you, Rick.
Are we live? Just before we let Rick make his comments, I want to thank Susan Moffett for having the idea and inspiration for this, for doing this for Rick.
Yes.
And helping us try to keep this a secret, which I think we may have done until the day. That said...
You did an extremely good job. You are a very good liar, Mayor. And Mayor. Oh, my goodness. Doesn't happen very often, but I'm speechless. I did not expect this at all. In fact, I almost didn't come, but, you know, shame on me. Wow, I missed my own day. But I'll tell you this, to have this happen in my hometown, the place where I grew up, where my roots are, I was literally born at the old Barksdale Air Force Base Hospital at Barksdale Air Force Base. Grew up in Boja City. It's deep for me. And, you know, over the years, I've had a few opportunities to go elsewhere, but it was never an opportunity I couldn't turn down, because here's what I would leave behind. I realize, and I tell people all the time, we don't have snow-capped mountains, and we don't have white sand beaches and snow and beautiful surfing and that kind of thing. But I'll tell you what, if you get to know our folks, our people, and this is what I tell our new folks who come to the television station, connect with us, then you'll fall in love with this place. And that's what happened to me. Over my life, I've connected with so many people that I've grown to love that I could never leave. So I'm here. I'm going to be buried at the old Hillcrest Cemetery, right next to my mom and dad. But this is an honor that I just will remember for the rest of my life. The fact that it came from my hometown means a whole lot. Y'all are awesome. Thank you.
Get the pictures in there?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you so much.
Appreciate you.
Rick.
Would the counsel indulge if this one more picture...
In front of our Christmas tree.
You want to take the writing off the...
Okay, so you want us to watch the signs, read the secretary of office, everything?
I, well, I did. I went to college. Amen. Went to college.
Where, do you know where it's streeting right now?
Galaxy. I think it was Galaxy. I think it was Galaxy. You don't need to ask him. No, he went to Boja, 72.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Tyler, and thank you, Mayor Walker, and congratulations to, on behalf of the city council, to Mr. Rick Rowe and his wife, Donna. Thank you so much. We have today committed reports, starting with Councilmember David Montgomery Jr., to bring us a briefing on the House Bill 408, progress and impact.
All right. Brought you all up to date last week a little bit, but first and foremost, I want to thank the people that were involved and let you all know. Representative Sam Jenkins from across the river is the gentleman that sponsored this bill and has certainly done a wonderful job in leading the charge and so forth. We want to thank Representative Doty Horton and our two senators, Ryan Gaddy and Beryl Peacock, for supporting this bill as well. But most of all, and I was a witness to it, and certainly was glad to be there to support our team, I have to say, our fire department, starting with our chief, Brad Zagone, Jeff Watson, Steve Pennell, and Matt Lauderbach, did a fantastic job of bringing forth what Boja City does and our superiority when it comes to saving lives. Our success rate for cardiac arrest, bringing them back, is over 33 percent. The national average is 9.8. The effect of this bill would have been that we would have lost one point, I mean, I'm sorry, had this bill not passed, and we'd have had to negotiate with the private insurance and pay Medicare rates, our ambulance fund would have lost $1.1 million a year. So you have two choices. Either raise the rates, right, which would have been an additional $5 per resident per month, or we'd have cut out two ambulances, because each ambulance costs $500,000 to run. So I can tell you that thanks to this team, and I also want to thank our lobbyist, Ginger Adams, she became involved, was a tremendous help. And anyway, it was wonderful to be a part of that and offer what I could to support it, and thanks to all the effort of everyone, the bill passed last week. And I believe it's on Thursday, the governor's going to sign it. So we'll have a picture made, and certainly like to present that to the council. And I just want to give a round of applause to our guys and the whole team that made that happen. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'd just like to comment, Mr. Montgomery, thank you for your involvement with that and bringing all of it to our attention.
Chief?
I just want to thank you from the fire department, going down and speaking and everybody and explaining what enterprise fund and all that was to the city and how important it was. And from us, thank you for your help with us, man.
That's what I'm here to do. Glad to be a part.
The longest speeches ever given.
On behalf of the other council members, we appreciate, Chief, your dedication to this city and the things that you do to make us more efficient. And Mr. Montgomery, appreciate your commitment as well. And we thank you that everything passed, and we don't have a way. Okay, and the next item is Mr. Mark Hudson, monthly project report.
Hi, Counsel.
Hello.
Whipple Road, a lot of progress has been made the last month. Within the next 10 days, half of the street will be paved with asphalt. We'll move all the traffic to that side and get to work on the other side. Reported last month that we had a glitch in our bidding documents, there was no dirt embankment, there was no item for that. So $175,000 extra tomorrow. Our good friend Butch Ford's going to ask his group, the police jury, to help us with that. I hope he's successful. Shed Road, the paving on the east side of Airline Drive, all those barricades next to the Circle K, that paving's complete. We're waiting for the concrete to cure. Once that's done, we'll seal the joints and put the stripes on it. So most of those barricades on that side of Airline Drive will go away in the next 10 days or so. Concurrently, over on the other side, where the bank is, there's a sewer main to be relocated. Once that's done, over the next about 15 days, we can start paving there. Last month, I reported to you that we'll have all the concrete poured from Airline Drive to Doctor's Drive. Well, there's not a chance in the world that's going to happen. But our new goal is the end of June to have that concrete down. I think that's realistic. And that will restore two lanes of traffic along Shed Road all the way from Airline Drive to Benton. It'll still be a huge construction zone, of course, but at least we'll have both lanes of traffic restored. The Brownlee Drive, right-hand turn lane at Airline Drive, we're going to open bids on that in a minute. I hear we only have two bids. Got my fingers crossed we get a good guy at a good price. US Sunflower Right-Hand Turn Lane, we'll bid that in about four to six weeks. Coleman Street, we're just rocking along on that. It's kind of slow because of the federal money's involved, but we could bid that July 2019 is what we're thinking there. Viking Drive, we could bid that April of 2019. We had our environmental study complete on Viking Drive, and there were no issues found, so that's a good thing. Innovation Drive was set to bid today, but that bid has been postponed. There's wetland issues to be worked out with the Corps and Justin Hadles quarterbacking that for us, and he's going to move it along as quick as he can. I've heard it's, it could be 90 to 120 days before we have our 404 permit. US 80 improvements, that leg of the Waltral Bigby Carriage Way, SWEPCO tells me they're going to be on the ground in two to three weeks. My plans will be delivered to me June the 1st, so that, we're on track to bid that this summer. The Waltral Bigby Carriage Way, it's rocking along. Pam is working on right-of-way issues all the time, so not much new to report there. I'm still looking for my plans in October. We've made some alterations to the bridge here just recently. I don't know if that's going to push that delivery date back or not. At our arena, the project's going on there, all the new seats are installed. Our new marquee sign that we opened bids on a couple of council meetings ago will be delivered in about six weeks, and it'll go up in a hurry. The next big thing is bidding some new kitchen equipment, that's about $190,000 item. At Boardwalk, we've created some new projects. We're looking at new stripes in the parking lots. We're looking to do some rehabilitation and sprucing up of the wall along the river. It's going to look real nice once we're done with that. And lastly, opened bids just this morning, new sidewalks here at City Hall. I just mentioned that to you because it's going to impact us all. It includes new pavement right out the door of the council chamber, so excuse the construction for the next couple of council meetings. But that's all I've got. If you've got any questions or anything I can help you with.
Mark, I know I asked you this last month or two months ago. When is the state going to overlay Barksdale or fix Barksdale Boulevard again? I'm sure we all got this letter, and I wanted to make sure you...
Yeah, they tell me it's on their list of projects. They tell me their list is very long, and that's my best answer. I drive it every day, and it's really rough. I'll remind them.
How long was that we did that, or they did that? 10 years, 12 years?
Counsel, I don't know.
I don't either.
It's been a while.
Been a while. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. The financial director, Ms. Stacey Fernandez.
Good afternoon, Counsel.
Good afternoon.
I've distributed the financial reports for April 2018, and on page one, you can see our revenues are 114 percent of budget, and the general fund portion of that is 104 percent. And page two, we've got our expenses by fund, and we are at 94 percent of budget favorable. On the third page, the second percentage down is our year-to-date over prior year, year-to-date, and we are 7.6 percent better than prior year. On the fourth page, we have our manning report. We're at 657 employees. To last month was 660, so we're down three more, and we're 35 down from budget. And on page five is our water and sewer report, and all the numbers are favorable, and the most accurate is your rolling 12 months, and we're at 104 percent over prior year. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Fernandez, according to Mr. Montgomery, we have some good news regarding our bond rating.
That's correct. We got a message, the mayor received a message on Friday from Moody's, and they are increasing our bond rating from AA3 to AA2, which is very good news. It's not often that a municipality would get an unresponded, you know, we didn't go out and seek this, they just gave us a bond increase, so we're really happy about that.
That's great.
We're doing great.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Unfinished?
Adopting ordinance to distribute funds in mosquito spraying to other accounts within the herbicide and mosquito spraying budget, which will accomplish the spray program and a savings of $42,000. Final reading?
Shall move. Second.
Any discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance authorizing the mayor to appropriate $10,000 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to contract with IA Finner, Jolly McClellan, consulting engineers to conduct an Airline Drive underpass at Kansas City Southern Rail feasibility study. Final reading?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on item two? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopting ordinance to abandon a public alley lying within the East Shreveport subdivision as recorded in the Boja Parish records in Book 60, page 17, and being located in Section 29 Township 18 North, Range 13 West. Final reading?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on item three? Please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance to appropriate funds to cover removal of debris from the two water intake structures the Boja City has on the Red River for a total of $28,600 to come from the Disaster Relief Fund. Final reading?
Summat. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Anyone would like to speak on item four? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Mr. Williams? Thank you.
Adopting ordinance to appropriate $345,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to be used to repair, fund repairs to the Louisiana Boardwalk River retaining wall and to re-stripe streets and parking lots of the Louisiana Boardwalk. Final reading?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached agreement with Atukapa Services LLC for stormwater drainage system master planning, storm drain system cleaning and inspection, peer review services and engineering services. Final reading?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Approve bid one or bid two from the low bidder for the landscape bids for the East Bank District. Bid one was $40,427.38. Bid two was $43,929.66.
Shall move.
I need a motion for either one.
All right, I make the motion, we get the bigger trees.
I second.
Bid number two.
That's item two.
That would be bid number two.
That's two, that's bid two.
Bid two.
And I second.
Okay. Okay, counsel, we have bid two on the table. Anybody would like to comment before we vote? Please cast your vote. Next item, under new business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for Glen Haven Court reconstruction.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is 190,000. The approved budget is for 200,000. It's coming from the 1991 Streets and Drainage Capital. There was one addendum that revised the bid form and addressed questions and answers. Okay, our first bid is from Three Gen Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $222,645. The next bid is from Best Jet Builders. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $272,854.50. The next bid is from Bowman Grading and Asphalt Inc. The next bid is from Bowman Grading and Asphalt Inc. They did not acknowledge the addendum. Therefore, we're going to have to throw this bid out. The next bid is from CWNW Contractors, Inc. The bid, they acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for two hundred fifteen thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. The next bid is from Dale's Paving, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. There's a cash bid bond included. It's for two hundred fourteen thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. The next bid is from North Louisiana Construction Contractors LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for a hundred and eighty-four thousand sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents. I ask, did you approve the reading of these bids?
So moved. Thank you. Second.
Second, Mr. Montgomery. Okay. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Witness opening of sealed bids for Brownlee Road at Airline Drive right turn lane.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The approved budget was for a hundred and sixty thousand to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Improvements Fund, and there are no addendums. The first bid is from Best Jet Builders. The bid bond is included. It's for two hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. The next bid is from CWNW Contractors, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for two hundred eleven thousand three hundred seven dollars even. I ask, did you approve the reading of these bids?
Take them under advisement?
Yeah, I have a question here. I mean, we're way outside our estimate and budget.
We'll have to take them under advisement.
Would legally, or are we bound, I mean, to accept one of them?
Yeah. I mean, we bid it, you know, just because we didn't estimate it properly doesn't mean that it's not, we'll have to appropriate some money from a source to fund it, but yeah, we put it out.
I mean, can you do anything, meet with them, from a value engineering standpoint, or it just is what it is?
Is what it is.
Is what it is.
We get barked right at you.
So do we have a motion and a second?
Well, I mean, it wasn't, so under advisement doesn't do anything to benefit us.
We'll have to come back and ask.
Until we come up with the appropriation of the money, we'll, we'll.
Okay. All right, then I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay. And will you report back to the council after negotiation or not?
They'll have to come back with an ordinance.
You'll have to pass an ordinance for the additional funds.
Who seconded? I got Montgomery for the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to purchase and make repairs to emergency pump at a cost of twenty thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to be used to replace and repair damage signage associated with Louisiana Boardwalk parking garage. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating five thousand dollars from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to support the Division of Economic and Workforce Development at Bojor Parish Community College, Second Annual Twenty-eighteen Upstate Rising, the North Louisiana Public Private Partnership Real Estate Development and Land Use Planning Law Conference. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Sir Irwin, would you like to give us any?
This is the second conference they've held. You know, it's all about jobs, and if we don't have jobs, then our community suffers. This is a very high-quality conference that they are sponsoring at Bojor Parish Community College. Jimmy Hall spoke at the conference last year, and from what I understand, it was very well-attended. The police jury is also contributing to this. I think it's a very worthwhile event to have in our community.
Do we have anyone would like to speak on this item? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopt a resolution that the city of Bojor City joins the President of the United States of America in proclaiming May twenty-second, twenty eighteen, as National Maritime Day, honoring the contribution of the American Merchant Marines who have defended the freedom of the United States and join in recognition of this important date in maritime history. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a foreman for public utilities. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for Green Acres Place HOA, July fourth parade, July fourth, twenty eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvements Fund to purchase a new bucket truck for the Traffic Engineering Division. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Mark, was that, was that thing totaled or what? Give any usable items out of it? Insurance paid off or anything, or what?
What I hear is the guy who crashed into the back of the truck did not have insurance. I don't know the particulars.
Nothing usable off that truck, then? Uh-uh?
Well, unusual.
Usual. I mean, nothing usable off that truck.
It was, it was the oldest truck they had. It was kind of like an old shoe. It was the oldest truck, but it was their favorite truck. But, uh, uh, nothing salvageable is what I hear, and it looks like we're just kind of out of luck on this one.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. The floor is open for comments from others. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a wastewater treatment plant operator for public utilities. First and final reading.
So moved.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance declaring surplus to the needs of the city of Bojor City, a seventy-seven-foot aerial ladder mounted on a two thousand four Ferrera chassis, chassis, and authorize in sale of the same to the town of Haughton for the appraised value of the unit. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? I wanted to ask the chief, how did you determine the valuation of, of the truck? Is it based on the year used, or?
Yes, sir. I called Farrar, who we buy fire trucks from, and asked them to do the appraisal on the truck. We have sent trucks to auction before and hardly gotten anything, and so kind of thought of a different method of reaching out to some other departments that maybe we could get the actual value of the truck. And the appraisal came back at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so.
Great.
Might add itself for twenty times what we've ever gotten for the sale of a fire, fire truck before, so.
That's great. Thank you, chief. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-five of two thousand seventeen. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
What does, what does this do?
Basically, we had an ordinance that was previously passed authorizing the transfer of five properties to the Fuller Center for the Katy built type homes that, that they do. And we, we didn't have in the ordinance the authorization for the mayor to execute the deeds as to clean up that land.
Is that fine? And this is the last item, item five. Any comments? Please cast your vote. We have a couple announcements. One, on May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, we'll not have a council meeting on that date. And number two, the agenda items for May twenty-ninth must be in by noon, May twenty-fifth.
Which is Friday.
Which is on a Friday. And all items should be forwarded to Jennifer in the mayor's office.
I'm sorry, city attorney's office.
City attorney's office. Okay. Okay, all right. Any other announcements? Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.